...with resources, and we're constantly talking about services and things we need from our nonprofits as far as invoices and tracking and all of the things, but then we don't offer services for that in our own economic development. I'd like to see us expand some services if possible to those organizations. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions? No? Thank you. I agree with what they said, so.
I appreciate you all. Thank you.
So now we're moving on to Arts and Culture. Dr. Shao Sanchez.
It's Arts and Culture, I'm sorry, Madam Chair and Counselors. It's Arts and Culture with Dr. Shao Sanchez as the Director. Their FY25 proposed general fund budget is fifty-one million, four hundred and thirty-nine thousand. They have four hundred and thirteen general fund positions. One and a half million is for non-recurring sponsored events and initiatives for community organizations. One hundred thousand dollars for biopark train operations that supports one full-time driver position, and two hundred and fifty thousand non-recurring funding for Route 66 visitor center operations. Here for questions.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Counselors. I'm happy to be here with you still after 10:00 PM, and so I'll just get to standing for questions.
Are there any questions for Director Sanchez? And I can see Counsel Feebelkorn, followed by Counsel Lewis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks for being here, Director. I know it's late. So can you tell me how much we're spending on Freedom Fourth out of your department?
Yes. Madam Chair, Counselor Feebelkorn, we have a budget projected for Freedom Fourth of three hundred and forty thousand dollars this year.
And that includes the fireworks?
Yes.
And plus the fifty-five thousand that Parks and Rec is spending. We have, I don't know enough to pay for all the food that we're shorting the animals at the zoo in that one line item, so just a point. Can you talk to us about the lack of funding for the food for the animals who live at the zoo?
Counselor Penya, Counselor Feebelkorn, we are, although we are experiencing a lot of increases in food costs, of course, over the last five years, I mean, I think everyone is. We're seeing just basic materials and supplies and food costs go up across all of our divisions and across all of our departments. I wouldn't say that we have a lack of food. We've been continuing to provide the same level of service, but we are experiencing, you know, constraints in all of the costs, but I think that's true for every single department.
Thank you. I would, I'm happy to hear you don't think there's a lack of food. I would say that the approximately seven hundred people that have emailed me are very concerned about the increases in cost and the lack of an increase in the food budget for the animals who live at the zoo, so I'm glad we have this on record now that you feel that there is adequate funding to pay for food for the next fiscal year for all of the animals who live at the zoo.
Madam Chair, Counselor Feebelkorn, you know, we have been bringing up the, our concerns for a couple of years on all of these increasing costs. I think this is something we have to deal with across the city. This is not, it doesn't just happen in our department. It is of concern as all of our costs are going up. We have had a lot of internal conversations with the CFO and with the Budget Office. We know that we're going to have to really pay attention to this budget. I am confident that we are going to have what we need to run the biopark at the level that we have been running it and at the level that the community expects us to run it. And we are all going to have to continue to figure out how to address rising costs in every department.
Right. I mean, I get that there are rising costs everywhere. You are the unique example of those rising costs impacting the care of animals who are kept there and have no choice but to eat the food you give them. So if there is continued rising costs and you do run out of funds from this budget line item, how do you intend to pay for the additional food that is needed?
Madam Chair, Counselor Feebelkorn, we have been absorbing those costs, those increasing costs, over the last several fiscal years. I mean, we will continue to do that to the best of our ability, and if we get to a point that we cannot, then we will approach this council at mid-year and discuss possibilities.
Thank you. One more set of questions. So the other concern that all of the seven hundred people that have emailed me share is that there was an issue paper for an additional veterinarian that was turned down. Can you tell us if that veterinarian is really needed? I mean, there's thirteen thousand animals and there's two veterinarians, so I think the answer is clearly yes. Can you talk about what's going to be given up in care for these animals without that additional veterinarian?
Madam Chair, Counselor Feebelkorn, yes, we do believe that it is time for us to have a third vet. It is important in terms of the updated AZA standards that we have a third vet. Again, we have discussed this internally. We do have a solution. We do feel like we're going to have a position in the next few weeks that we can reclassify and make a veterinarian, so using an existing position. And we've already discussed doing that, and we have a path forward. So I'm confident we will have that third veterinarian in the new fiscal year.
And how, and what pile of money will that come out of for this budget that we're now considering and approving as the budget approval body for the City of Albuquerque?
Madam Chair, Counselor Feebelkorn, that is within the existing FTEs and the existing personnel budget that we have.
I will just close by saying, you know, one of the first things I asked when I became the City Counselor was of the zoo folks. I brought this issue up when we had lots of money in the budget a couple of years ago and said, hey, you have over ten thousand animals. Don't you want another veterinarian? I will champion that. And at the time, I was told, no, we don't want additional veterinarians. We're totally fine. And it's unfortunate that you waited until a year when we have a flat budget and not a lot of money to say that you need that. So I do think that's a really unfortunate situation, and I do, I'm very happy that there's an answer that can be worked in within this budget. But I do, again, want all the folks that have been emailing me to hear this. I will post this video on my website so that people can learn about it. Thanks.
Madam Chair, Counselor Feebelkorn, thank you for that. And we do, I absolutely remember when you made that offer, and at the time, we were absolutely in compliance with AZA, and we do feel like it's time to add that third vet. And I do want to just say, we've added twenty-seven positions to the biopark over the last six years under this administration. So we do, we do feel like we're in a very strong place in terms of the staffing at the zoo.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, one more thing. I just, I have to say, you know, we can go above and beyond AZA requirements. The animals who are held here deserve the best care and the best food and the best services, and just saying we have to stay exactly along the AZA guidelines is upsetting and foolish in my mind.
Thank you, Counselor, Council, City Council President Lewis.
Madam Chair, thank you, and Director, thank you. What's the purpose for the fee increase? Mission for the increase?
Madam Chair, Council President, it is to bring in additional revenue. A healthy general fund is important. Frankly, it's incredibly important for the Department of Arts and Culture. We run a lot of, you know, public facilities that absolutely are funded primarily through the general fund. And so we have to contribute our revenues so that we have a strong general fund, and we have strong funding for all of our cultural venues.
It's not going to feed animals or, there's not a shortfall anywhere that you're expecting to cover because of it? Any additional services that you feel like the zoo will be providing because of it?
Madam Chair, Council President, we have been growing the budget at the biopark for many, many years, and all of that money has come from the general fund. And so we are benefiting from the general fund every single day at the biopark. And so, as I said, we need a strong and healthy general fund in order to continue to grow things that we're doing at the biopark and also at our museums and our theaters.
But again, I mean, that's one of the other issues I think I have with just the fee increase. I mean, it's, again, this is, it's general fund. I mean, you all specifically said you're not, you will not use it to offset costs at the zoo. I believe that was it. So it goes to the general fund. It could be used for anything. I don't think that's good budgeting, and I don't think it's good, you know, for taking, again, millions of dollars out of the pockets of families, kids, parents, you know, seniors, and, you know, people on fixed incomes, and people just to raise their rates if they're not, you know, directly benefiting in some way, you know? I mean, providing a better service because of those fees, or simply, I think, again, I think I'd have a much easier time with it if you simply said that we're going to feed the animals with it, you know, but it's just, that's not the case. So I think we can do better than that, especially when it comes to taking millions of dollars out of, you know, families' pockets and people in our city, and just putting it into a general fund that could just be used anywhere that we don't know where it's going to be used. I mean, I think if we did not approve that fee, it seems like it wouldn't be missed at all, you know? And so what would be the purpose of it then? Is that something that we need to consider? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now we have Counselor Champagne.
Madam Chair, if it's okay, I'll, one more comment, but I can come back later if I'm...
I'll defer to Counselor Champagne. I called on him, so is it okay?
You go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I'm sorry, Counsel President. Go ahead and finish, sir.
I guess one more quick point on that is that, you know, the mayor did a, I think it was a press release today, and it said that, you know, some counselors might be opposed of these fee increases, and, you know, and basically said, we need these fee increases for, I believe he said feeding the animals. I believe he said, you know, services at the golf course and things like that. And so, I mean, that's just terribly misleading, because what we've talked about here tonight is that not what these fee increases are going toward. And so the mayor is either terribly misinformed about his own budget, or, you know, just doesn't understand, you know, what his own budget does, or is just misleading people in that regard. And so, you know, I want to make sure that we're being very clear on how these monies are being spent, what they're intended for. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Counselor Champagne.
Counselor Champagne.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Madam Chair. You kind of hit everything that I was going to touch base on, and Director, I'm a little confused. You requested, and what it put in here is that you had requested two hundred thousand dollars and was denied it by the administration or the mayor's office, but at the same thing, requested a dollar per person for out-of-state tickets generating a hundred thousand dollars, which was then adjusted to five dollars per out-of-state and one dollar for in-state people. Quick little, you know, APS math, that would generate about five hundred thousand dollars for out-of-state people and five hundred thousand for in-state people, which roughly would mean that we get about the entire city. The city is about five hundred and eighty-eight thousand people, so five hundred thousand people within the city, the state, is visiting our zoo. So to raise those rates on people when the economic issues that we are facing right now is a little confusing when you don't approve the animal food funding in the same sentence. So is there a little explanation why the two hundred thousand dollars wasn't approved, but it improved to generate a million dollars worth of revenue was?
Madam Chair, Counselor Champagne, I would like to point out that we do have, thanks to this council, a very generous program that ensures that families who are struggling financially and seniors can get into the biopark and our museums for a very, very affordable price of two dollars an adult and one dollar per children. So we have insured access to a large and important part of our community. In terms of increasing the admission fees and increasing the revenue, again, we haven't done this since 2017. We haven't adjusted any of our admission fees at the biopark. It's been seven years. There have been significant increases in costs. We have increased the biopark budget over those same seven years using general fund dollars, all of those years that we weren't asking for increases. And so I think if we look at how we rely on the general fund, we've already been relying on it, and so increasing fees for the biopark is reasonable, given the number, the amount of money that we've actually increased the budget over the past several years.
Madam Chair, completely understandable, and I get where you're coming from, that we haven't done this. You heard the same thing from Parks and Rec, that they haven't done it in four years. But what I am really confused about is the fact that we, you said you rely on the general fund, then should we pull the two hundred thousand dollars to feed the animal out of the general fund and we'll be good to go? We rely on it so much and...
Madam Chair, Counselor Champagne, I'm not sure that, can you repeat your question? I'm not sure I understood the question there.
Question would be, if you rely, and Parks and Rec relies so much on the general fund, and this is, this generating million dollars annually is going into the general fund, then pull two hundred thousand dollars out of the general fund to feed the animals? Is that not simple logic, or am I not understanding the budget? Or what you said of how the general fund is so crucial to your program?
Sorry, Madam Chair, I'm sorry for the interruption. Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to extend the rule, the meeting to eleven o'clock.
Counselor Baca. Counselor Champagne?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Counselor Hassan?
Yes.
Counselor Feebelkorn?
Yes.
Counselor Groun?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
Counselor Rogers?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Penya?
Yes.
That passes nine zero. Thank you. Thank you. So is that in the form, Counselor Champagne, is that in the form of a question? Because I do think we have Kevin Sarso who can answer that for you.
That would be, yeah, the administration can answer that. Yes, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairperson and Counselor Champagne. So back to general fund. The general fund is exactly that. It's a general fund. We have GRT money in there, and we have fees for services in there. General GRT covers services that people get that they don't necessarily walk up to obtain. So the zoo, you're paying a fee, an admission fee. Golf, you're paying an admission fee. Pool, you're paying an admission fee. When fire and rescue shows up at your door, that money that comes out of general fund pays for their services as well. But you're not necessarily choosing to have fire and rescue show up at your door. So these user fees are intended to recoup some of the money that these services that we're providing at these venues are costing us. So transit is a great example of zero fees, right? Zero fares, zero fees. We, you know, council made that choice. We moved ahead. Up to, prior to that, transit was heavily, heavily subsidized by the general fund. All of these other entities, all of these other venues and operations are heavily subsidized by the general fund. So I just want to draw that comparison, that general fund is exactly that. It is a general fund, and it pays for services that the city provides. Users that are using a golf course, users that are going to the zoo and they're using a pool, are paying a little bit more because they're choosing to go there. I would also add that we have a program for the biopark, I believe if you're on SNAP benefits, that you have, so if you're very low income, you still have access, these fees will not impact that at all. But I just, I want to point out, and I want to sort of deflate this myth that the general fund is not supporting these departments. It is entirely supporting these departments, and it's entirely fair to ask for a little bit of money from the users of these additional venues and services to help support what's being provided.
Madam Chair, that's wonderful to hear. Then the two hundred dollars, as it was not funded, from the request of animal food can come out of general fund. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Lewis just wanted to...
Madam Chair, so really, it's, I mean, it should be budgeted. I mean, if it's, if there's a shortfall in the zoo, then it should be budgeted, and we should identify some funding to be able to fund that. So I think what we're saying is, for the next year, we see that there might be some, a shortfall, if that's true, and do that. But what you're describing is a general fund for the zoo, for, you know, for the department that is an unspecified, unbudgeted, wouldn't call it a slush fund, but I mean, it's almost, it almost sounds like that, you know? It's unspecified and unbudgeted, you know? So if there's shortfalls that we believe that the department's going to have this next year, then let's budget it. If it's a shortfall of revenue, then let's tie the increases to a specified shortfall or need and do it like that. So I mean, again, you know, we may come at a different, you know, I guess, opinions on it, but not asking to defend the fee increase, or, you know, everybody should pitch in and pay their fair share, but I, you know, I disagree with that. But I mean, I disagree, we're going to disagree on that raising fees for people and just taking another half a million dollars or a million dollars out of the pockets of people in our city and just putting it in a general fund, you know, just transferring it, you know, especially without, just without it being specified.
If I may, Council Chair and President Lewis, I agree that we will, we can disagree on fees. I'm perfect, I perfectly respect that opinion, but we will agree on appropriate budgeting. And this is something that the CAO and I have been talking about as we've come into this budget cycle. We have done some great work with APD to align their budget structurally. I think probably before your time on council, we had APD spending a lot of their vacancy savings on line items like ammunition and contractual services and the like. And we have gotten APD in alignment with some structural changes to the budget. And I totally agree with you that we should be budgeting better by line item. And this council does approve at the program level, but we can do a better job of identifying and structurally aligning and correcting department budgets to address exactly what you're talking about.
And Madam Chair, especially when we're raising fees, especially when we're raising fees. I think it even calls more for, you know, a little bit different way than we've done it before on specifying where these, I just don't think it's right for us to raise fees to one of the services that we provide for a long time without being able to say to our community, you know, the people we represent, that you're going to get something a little better. You're going to get a little bit better service, or we need you to help us take care of a specific need that we've been in need of. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Groun.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The zoo, is this proposed fee increase for all visitors or just non-residents?
Madam Chair, Counselor Groun, this is across the board. There are fee increases for in-state and for out-of-state visitors.
What are out-of-state visitor increases?
Out-of-state visitor increases are five dollars, generally five dollars per ticket.
Okay, thank you. I want to say a couple of things. We have received seven hundred emails, she's not kidding, from about IT in the library and then about the zoo. I do want to make sure, and a lot of them have said, "Counsel, how can you take our money away from us?" And I need to make it clear that it's not the council that's taking it away, it's the proposed budget that we've been given that came down from administration. So I want to make that clear. I received in the mail today from a five-year-old, handwritten in kindergarten, and he said, "How can you, Counsel, take our, not feed our animals?" And so that's why I'm saying this. We did not take the money away. We will fund the animals. We will make sure they're fed. It's important that we take care of the animals that are in our care, make sure that they're healthy and that they're happy. And so I just want to make that clear. And then in regards to the library and the IT funding, can you kind of give us a little bit of history, how that IT has been funded before? Because I know that this was specifically funded a certain way, and then why has it not been approved? Anybody?
Yeah. Madam Chair, Counselor Groun, first, I think we all absolutely agree that we want to continue to provide excellent service and excellent care at the biopark. And as I said a little bit ago, we have had a lot of internal discussion about how we're going to ensure that happens with the current budget. And I can assure you that I would not be standing here saying that I'm confident if I was not confident.
I'm glad.
And I think my colleagues all know me well enough to agree that that is true, that I would not be standing here saying I'm confident that we have a solution to move forward if it was not true.
Very good.
In terms of the library and those IT expenditures, for many, many, many years, those expenditures were in the bond program. We, you know, we, there's, there's an argument about what we should be spending bond money on, and so for the last several years, we've been funding IT through non-recurring appropriations in the budget.
Okay.
Again, this is another place where we do have a solution. I have talked with the administration, and we do have a solution that I'm confident of moving forward. It was not the administration's intention to shortchange the library in terms of that critical need, and we have, we have talked about how that's going to be resolved.
Thank you. I'm glad that you figured it out.
Thank you. Counselor Baca.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually have the same question, because I've gotten so many emails. Could you share what the solution is?
Madam Chair, Counselor Baca, for which specific?
Oh, the library IT.
The library IT.
I've got a ton of emails on that.
Madam Chair, Counselor Baca, would you like, Mr. Sarso, would you like me to take that? Or would you like to take it? Okay.
Council Chair, Counselor Baca, we have, the Department of Arts and Culture has had reversions every year that this administration has been here. We are confident that there is funding within their budget to cover any overages that they might have. Typically, our departments do have overages from line item to line item. Departments, with some exceptions, I mean, departments typically do not overspend their department budget, but we do have money available within the budget that doesn't get spent on, we have vacancy savings from time to time. We have other savings as well, but we're confident that they have had enough reversion over the past few years that we know that they can cover these minimal costs for both library IT and also for feed and care of the animals. But going forward, we will be addressing this in structural changes to the budget next year, in the next budget cycle, much like we did with APD, to take care of these line items.
Is that it? Okay, thank you. Did you want to do a quick follow-up on that?
I think that's good. You should have a line item in there that's for it specifically, instead of taking it from vacancy savings and then putting, you know, having to create that. Do that in the first place, seriously.
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Rogers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hi, Dr. Sanchez. I just wanted to, my question's about the sponsored events. I was excited to see the complete list of sponsored events, and I saw Juneteenth on there, so thank you for that. I don't see, though, two other very large events, the World Refugee Day or Indigenous Peoples' Day celebration. Is there a reason that those are, because I know Arts and Culture have supported those in the past, and why they're not included in these sponsored events?
Madam Chair, Counselor Rogers, on the sponsored events, those are generally, those are generally recommendations that come from the administration and from city council. We do not make those recommendations. We do implement them. Yes, we have supported, as our budget has allowed. Again, we don't have specific line items for sponsored events outside of this one-point-five million dollars that's there. We have, at times, been able to support those. We are supporting all three of those events this year. So it always depends on our budget and the expenses we have with the other events that are committed through our community events division. So even though you don't see them on there going into the next fiscal year, it doesn't mean that we will not have funding available to continue those partnerships.
Thank you. Thank you. Would it be helpful for us to add them as line items so that we make sure that they're funded moving forward?
Madam Chair, Councilor Rogers, I think that's a council decision.
Clearly. But would it be helpful for your department to have them in the non-recurring sponsored events? Or should it be in equity and inclusion's budget is really what I'm getting at? Since those, all three of those are there. Okay. Okay, my colleagues say that it's up to us, so even better. Thank you.
So, thank you, Director. So before we move on to senior affairs, I just want to, you know, clarify, I know it's already been mentioned here, but the administration, you know, the way people are understanding it out in the community is that council or the city made these cuts. And just for the record, I just want to say that this budget came down, again, from the administration to city council for us to deliberate whether we're going to include it or not include it in the future. But this was the proposed budget from the administration, not from the council or the city as a whole. So then I had a question, and I don't know if it's for the director or maybe it's probably for the administration. So Arts and Culture did an issue paper, and how much was the issue paper for the increases? How much was it for out-of-town for the issue paper?
I believe out-of-town for Art and Culture, Council Chair...
I know the answer, but I just...
I believe it was a dollar.
Okay. And then for in-town?
They did not propose anything for in-state. But because we moved in-state up, we moved out-of-state up as well.
Correct. So then my question is, how did the administration decide to increase the fees when the department director and working through all that didn't want that, or didn't request that significant amount of an increase?
That was, Council Chair, that was an administrative decision to help us balance the budget and cover increasing costs. I mean, we know costs are increasing across the city and we wanted to make sure that we had, we shored up the general fund for the services that are being provided and the users that are exercising use of those services.
Okay. I just wanted that for the record. Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to senior affairs. Director Anna Sanchez. And Director, as you're, I know you're going to do your little presentation, but Director, if you could really talk initially to the study that we did, because I really want to go back to that study, so...
Okay, finally, we have senior affairs with Director Anna Sanchez. Their FY25 proposed general fund budget is $10,954,000 with 75 general fund positions and 71 grant positions. $225,000 in non-recurring is carried forward to continue security enhancements at senior and multi-generational centers and $350,000 in non-recurring is carried forward to support increased food costs and participation rate. And I'll turn it over to Director Sanchez.